I want to welcome you out to this community conversation. What we're going to talk about tonight is the fire station. It's been 50 years since King Fisher has had a fire station built. We're going to show you our progress we've made thus far. You could see to my left what the fire station will look like, the layout of the building, the size. Our current station now is about 7,500 square feet. Five guys sleep together in one room. It's really tight quarters. We can't store all of our equipment in that fire station. The community's grown over the last 50 years. And the mayor and the city council are unified in building a fire station. I know many of you probably voted in 2021 for that half cent sales tax. We're going to talk a little bit about that. The cost of construction, we brought our architects with us. BRW has been in the business a long time. They've built over 360 fire stations. So they're very much versed in the construction field and they've built a variety of stations. You're going to see some fire stations that, in my humble opinion, look like professional office buildings, but our fire station is right there, what we're looking at, and it looks like a fire station. But every community is different. Ray Holliday is here representing BRW, and I'm going to turn the mic over to him. He will make the first presentation, and then the fire chief and I have put one together, some more bullet points that'll cover what we're going to talk about tonight. But basically, it's a community conversation. We have the mayor and the full council with us, Commissioner Whitrock, Commissioner Mecklenburg, Commissioner Burpo, and Commissioner Taylor. So they're here to listen just as much as I am. My goal is to put this proposal out on the street in April of 2025 and bid it and hopefully get it awarded in June of 2025 and start construction right away. And it'll take about 14 to 16 months to build, so it'll be sometime the end of 2026 when this new fire station will be available for the community. I'm new to the community. I've been here 15 months and I'm still getting acquainted, so I really appreciate those of you who took time out. I appreciate my firefighters cooking some Firehouse chili. And so I'm really hoping that we have a good conversation tonight. And for those of you attending, you're representing the entire community. And so that's a lot on your shoulders, but we do want to hear from you. We'll have a mic that we can pass around after we put this PowerPoint out there, and you may have some questions, and we'll try to address them. So with that, I'm going to turn some time over to Ray Holliday.
Hey, thanks, Jim. Well, good evening, citizens of King Fisher. As Jim mentioned, I'm trying to get it, not block anyone here. I'm Ray with BRW Architects. We've been designing fire stations for about 24 years, and we've, as Jim mentioned, we've done a little over about 360 stations. And currently, we're working in six separate states right now, so we have a fairly good knowledge in fire stations and the function and the costs and so forth. And so the city of King Fisher's been great to work with. The fire department's been excellent to work with. And so as we've been doing some preliminary design on the facility, we've come into some hurdles with the costs and kind of want to go over that with you all tonight and kind of show you where we're at with the design and educate you a little bit on that and kind of show you a little bit, some of the details, and then kind of, kind of where things have been going cost-wise the last four years since the pandemic, and then see if I can answer any questions. So I guess there's a clicker somewhere. And so the image we have up here is kind of the image you would see from the highway. So... But we'll get into the details of it in a minute. Just want to tease you with it, and we'll kind of, kind of return to this in just a minute. So we're going to talk about construction economy, kind of material costs, and then some of our firms, BRW, so kind of show you some similar stations in kind of, in hopes of what this facility will look like. So as you all know, we had COVID back in 2020, and things kind of froze. Construction kind of slowed down, and we all isolated and so forth. And then kind of coming out of the pandemic, spring of '21, summer and so forth, we started seeing prices jump across the board. And going into '23, we saw a 40% increase in construction costs throughout the country. Lead times for some of these items were dramatically increased. That was kind of some of the costs for some of the prices going up. And there was more work and less competition, so that kind of allowed for construction costs to be maybe higher than it should have been because the competition isn't there with everyone being so busy. So with that said, we have researched kind of the construction costs. This is a construction cost index, which is published every quarter kind of nationally, and it starts in 2009. And the bar on the very left is the January of '09, and then each bar after that is kind of December of '09, December 31st of each year going across there. So it uses January '09 as kind of the base, is kind of 100, and then from there goes up and down. And so if you recall, we kind of had the recession hit kind of fall of '08, kind of things kind of dipped in '09, and then things started climbing out in 2010, 2011. And you can see kind of a gentle rise in construction costs from there as it rose all the way into 2018, a little bit of a jump with the market and costs. And then we hit the pandemic in 2020, kind of levels off. And then in '21 is when the whole construction and all costs, cars, automobiles, homes, all that kind of jumped, and it hasn't come back down. It steadily increased in '21, '22. And then into '24, it hasn't leveled off, but it's now more kind of normal trends. We're seeing a 3% increase over the years, what's projected. These are the first two quarters, so it's about a percent and a half at the moment, or a percent and three quarters, I think I saw. So it is increasing, but it's not like what it was between '20 and '21 and '21, '22. So a little bit of why construction costs are a little bit more than what it was originally. In fire stations, like I said, we do a number of these. We do about 16 stations a year. And back in 2018, the average price we were seeing was about $389 a square foot. And then it was kind of creeping up to $403, $455, and then '21 jumped to $575 a square foot and all the way to $667 a square foot in 2024. For this station, we're kind of forecasting about $580 a square foot, so a little bit below the average, but the range is about $475 a square foot to $750 a square foot. So we're kind of in the middle, kind of just slightly below middle. Again, the city and the fire department's been very, very responsible and very forthcoming in terms of their needs and not wanting anything outlandish, but they're wanting long, durable, low-maintenance type of materials and to minimize maintenance on the building, and you'll see that here in just a minute. So material costs, just a few examples of things that have increased since the dream of this facility here. There's been a labor shortage in the construction industry, which has caused prices to go up in terms of wages and so forth, timelines, things like that. Material costs, very volatile fluctuations in material, due supply chains and so forth, electrical panels, generators, things like that. For a while, there was a year wait on generators. It's come down now to six months, but for a while, there, a lot of departments were, had over a year wait just to get a generator. And then costs, pressures rising across various aspects of construction and affecting profitability. And so here's plumbing and mechanical. So this is kind of going back to 2008 as well. We're using that as kind of the starting point of like 100%, and then kind of building up from there. And the red box kind of indicates 2020 to 2024. Again, significant jump in plumbing and electrical costs. Again, a 40% increase there nationally across the board, and it's affecting here in central Oklahoma. Concrete, cubic yard. This one's not quite as long duration. This is '21 to '23, so a three-year period, but it's about a $40 increase in cubic yard just from '21 to '23. So again, this is kind of affecting what was hoped to be a little lesser cost per square foot for the building, being a little bit more now being going into 2024. And then we're going to talk a little bit about some of the projects we've done here and kind of some of the similarities we see in your facility.
Hi, my name is Ashton. I'm also with BRW. So just for background that we've done, so like both Jim and Ray said, we've done about over 300 fire stations. And so our favorite part is we get to customize these facilities for the community. So none of our fire stations are the same, and we'd really like to dive in and research your community and really make a building that fits it. So right now on the slide, we've got more of our commercial fire stations, so things that you would see kind of outside neighborhoods. And then we also kind of have more of our residential type looks. We've got a gable roof. We play with different materials to really play in and fit the community. So these are similar to the boards that are in the back as well. So we've got the site plan, so Main Street on the left, north is facing up. The apparatus bay, the trucks would exit on the main street. We have public parking on the north side and then the employee parking back behind on the east side. So here we've got the floor plan, so we've got a lobby up in front and a training room to really keep the public spaces together. And then once you go through that lobby, you've got more of your office spaces. And then adjacent to the bay, you have more of your apparatus support. Kind of the trends that we've seen in fire stations is to create healthy stations. And so we have the apparatus bay, which is filled with carcinogens. And that's considered your hot zone, and then we like to have transition spaces. So to be able to dispose of those carcinogens before entering into the living to help the firefighter stay healthy. And then the second floor is more for the living of the firefighter. So you have your dorm rooms, your day room, your kitchen, and your dining area, as well as bathrooms, and then some support spaces such as mechanical and electrical. So like Ray said, this would be the facade that faces Main Street. So you've got your main entry within the tower. We've got a plaza out in front, and then the visitor parking there on the left. And then just a side view, so you can start to see the second story a little bit more on this side with those offices on the first floor and the dorms on the second floor.
And then I guess in this slide, kind of, what we're kind of illustrating here is Ashton showed some images of what the building looks like. That scheme is kind of what we call the better scheme or the preferred scheme. The base scheme is kind of what we're budgeted for right now. And so the challenge is, is the department needs some elements that will help them in the long term and even short term that we can't seem to squeeze into the budget right now based on construction costs. So one is what we call exhaust louver. So in the truck bay, because, as Ashton mentioned, there's diesel exhaust. We've got to exhaust that out, so we have exhaust fans. What's the trend right now, and most departments are going to, is what's called direct capture, where there's a hose that hooks up to the fire truck that keeps those diesel particulars from getting into the bay, tracking that into the living quarters. Research recently in the past has shown that those particulars are highly subjective to causing cancer and so forth. And so unfortunately, firefighters have almost a two-to-one chance of getting cancer than you and I do because of the hazardous materials and things that are around. And so the focus is to kind of keep those out of the fire station and keep that into the, in the truck bay of anything, but keep it out of the truck bay so they don't track it into the fire station. The next item is the generator. It's about a $250,000 item, and with the budget we have, it's hard to squeeze that in there. And so it's one of those things that we need to have, and we don't have that room to kind of get it in there. Some of the other elements is kind of just the garage door and track. There's kind of, there's a commercials track, which is more of a three-inch track with heavy-duty rollers. That's more commercial. These garage doors go up 10, 12 times a day and close and so forth, so there's a lot of wear and tear as opposed to would be more of a residential grade that will work, but will have some maintenance issues and replacing of parts and so forth. Same with the roof. An asphalt shingle roof is about a third of the cost of a standing seam roof. That gets us in budget is where we're at right now. They like to have a standing seam metal roof, which is more long-term, a 50-year roof. And so that's one of the things we're looking at. This building right now currently has about 25% masonry on it. We like to have a whole building be masonry. The building right now is, has hardy siding with paint on it, so they'll have to do maintenance on it and so forth. The goal is to have it all masonry so that there's zero maintenance for the years to come and more hardy and more durable. Same with some of the other features, kind of lesser quality of windows right now, kind of more of a residential versus commercial. Firefighters are a little bit more, trying to find a word, but they can be a little bit destructive on a building when they're not trying to be. And so having things a little bit more, I never say firefighter-proof because they'll destroy it in front of me, but firefighter-resistant in terms of materials and so forth, so that lasts for 50 years as the current station has. And then just simple things like pre-manufactured cabinetry versus more durable cabinetry, being more solid wood, so the hinges or the screws go into wood rather than MDF board, which can strip out and so forth. And the list kind of goes down in terms of plastic laminates versus solid surface or quartz countertops and alerting system, which they desperately need. So getting that in there so they're not using radios. They've got a speaker system that's kind of going throughout. And then using more heavy-duty commercial lighting versus residential. So because of that, that's kind of, that's kind of pushing us into a cost more from, I think we're around 500 a square foot and getting closer to $580 a square foot to get them kind of what they're hoping for and what they're needing for the next 50 years. So... Anything else, Jim?
Nope. Ryan, I'll set up for the next PowerPoint.
Thank you.
A couple of the drawings, like I said, are on my left. You know, I shared with you right now, five guys are in one room, and then the captain has one private suite in the fire station. They got one bathroom for six guys on a shift. I've had four kids, and we've had more bathrooms than the fire department has. This proposed station will have four bathrooms, and it will have eight bedrooms. Their dorm rooms are not very big, but at least each firefighter will have his own room. And then we've built in, depending on if King Fisher continues to grow a little bit over the next few years, or we recruit a female firefighter, you know. In my career, I've seen one or two female firefighters hired. And so we haven't had that here, but you never know what's going to come in the future. Those spare bedrooms that aren't going to be used, we use for storage until we need them, but at least we're planning for the future. I truly want this building to last 50 years. I want some city manager 50 years from now to say, boy, they did the right thing in 2024, 2025, 2026. So, did you get it up, Ryan? Okay. Do I have a clicker? Are you going to click for me or... All right. Did I just push, which button do I push?
On the right.
This one? Okay. All right. So here's just a little more information. There's the site. We paid, somebody asked me, I always spoke with the Lions. They asked me if the land had been paid for already. It has. It was about $650,000. The city used ARPA funds to purchase that. There again, there's the building. Currently, it's about $9.1 million. There is a contingency built in there of about 10%, so that's about $900,000. Yes, sir?
Let me throw this at you, because I learned this the hard way. We just had two major hurricanes that wiped out a whole bunch of stuff in the southeast. Prices of construction stuff is going to go through the roof here in a couple of months as everybody starts to rebuild.
Yeah. So that's our current price. That's without the upgrades that Mr. Holliday pointed out. That's at about $500 a square foot. This current, like I shared with you at the beginning, the current building's about 7,500 square feet, and this is going to be 16.5. So we're going to go twice the size and a little bit more. But currently, we store some of our equipment in a rented facility about a half a block from the fire station. Estimated interest, today's interest, if we wanted to borrow money, I've talked to a couple of people, I know we've got a couple bankers here, we're looking at about 4.4% interest. And if you spread that out over about 15 years, depending on how much we borrow, we're looking at about $2.5 million in interest. I know the feds cut the Fed, the discount rate by half a percent. I'm hoping by the time we get this thing awarded, maybe it'll be down another half a percent or three-quarters of a percent, but you never know what the economy is going to do. I mean, economists are saying, you know, inflation's coming down, so they're willing to loosen up the purse a little bit. But right now, we're looking at about 4.5% or 4.4% on our interest. That's our architect fees to design, inspect the whole kit and caboodle to put this together. It takes about nine, 10 months to do that. So here's, here you go. You've got the land costs, you've got your building costs, you've got your interest on money, architect fees. We're about $12.9 million. And that's if we go with a $500 a square foot building.
What's that jump to if we go with the better scheme?
We'll add $85, $85 times 16,500.
Nine and a half million.
Yeah. Yeah, nine and a half million for the building, yeah.
Have you guys considered, I know how a project like this is, your architect designs it, and then you award it to some contractor.
Yep.
These contractors, they, they build everything, and I know it's a government entity. They build everything, it costs twice as much to build for a government entity as it does for personal. But why can't you, with custom cabinets and some things, there are some things I've seen on there that is on the better scheme? We've got people here locally in the community that do those kind of things, like build custom cabinets and put in good countertops and stuff like. We could probably save some money.
Yeah.
Is that a possibility?
We talked about that as a committee, and Ray said, you know, that there were like some furniture if we wanted to buy a refrigerator, a dishwasher, and, because each one of the, each shift, there's three shifts, and there'll be three pantries. Right now, we just have one refrigerator and one pantry. I mean, it's just very inconvenient. Every shift, you know, everybody eats something different, so that's going to be in there. So there is some flexibility with that, that we could do some work or subcontract some of the work ourselves. So yeah, that's on the table.
So Jim, the $580 would take the building costs from 9.1 to 9.6.
Okay.
So you'd just add about $500,000 to the $12.9?
Yeah.
So you're looking at about a $13.5?
$13.5.
That's not much for a significant increase in quality.
The thing is, I was here, lived in town here when they built the present station.
Yep.
And I remember it was just a couple years down the road. They had all kinds of problems with that station, roof leak, the doors broke, name it, they were doing all kinds of repair. Thought, yeah, just long enough to get it out of warranty.
Yeah.
All kinds of stuff that went wrong with it.
If I remember right, chief, is that roof flat? Do we have a flat roof, Tony?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we have discouraged flat roofs. That's why this one's got so many pitches in it, and it's been an architect challenge, but Ray's group was up to it, so...
Now then, now the question.
Yes, sir.
Are you designing this building to put all of the fire equipment that the fire...
Yes, sir.
All of it in?
Yes.
What are you going to do at the old fire station?
We haven't, we haven't crossed that road yet. I want to get this thing, you know, get it designed, and then we can start talking about what to do.
Let me make a suggestion there.
Yep.
Most of these communities, as they grow, all at once, hey, we need another fire station. They need more than one station. Why not use the old fire station to park some of the vehicles in that you get out maybe once a month to go drive? And...
One of the options is to keep the existing fire station right now as a substation later on down the road. That's definitely on the table.
That needs to be. We need to keep that thing.
Yeah, and that's part of having this community conversation, is just to get feedback from you guys. We have not even contemplated what to do. I know the Catholic Church has an interest, you know, in the property once we evacuate because, you know, it's right next to their church and their area, but we've had no discussions directly with the Catholic Church. Yes, sir?
I think you're going to find that EPA is going to require that direct evacuation system.
Oh, the carcinogens? Yeah. Yeah.
That's just a life safety thing.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am. We've got another microphone. Chief, will you run that down there to her so everybody can hear the question? She's right over here. Pretty lady with the blonde hair, next to the handsome fellow with the sunglasses on his head.
I was just going to recommend that you repeat what the audience said, but now you've got a mic from the...
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, sir. Ryan, over here on the...
My question is, what are you going to do with the old fire station?
Well, that was one of the questions that was raised. Yeah, that's... Okay. We have made no decision on what to do with the old fire station.
No idea whatsoever.
None. None. We're still, you know, like I said, it'll be the end of 2026. We're not even at the end of 2024. So we still have two years ahead of us to determine, you know, what we're going to do with that fire station. So... But I will tell you, I've had a, I had an internal study done by one of my employees, and the city of King Fisher owns about 177 pieces of property totaling over 800 acres. So we need to lighten our load a little bit, you know. I don't like being a landlord of that much property, but I realize some of it's golf courses and parks and those things. But as far as public-owned property, we own over 800 acres.
Selling that might be a good way to make up some of this...
What's your title?
Pardon?
What's your title?
Oh, I'm Jim, I'm Jim Thomas. I'm the city manager here. So, yeah. I got here July of last year, so...
Jim, are you going to show the numbers of the taxes that we're getting now and where we're going to be...
Oh, yes. Let me continue, yeah. As I shared with you, there's a contingency on the construction of about 10%. Currently, we have about $2.2 million in savings that that tax has been brought in since when you passed that half a cent in 2021. That is restricted. The only thing we've paid out of that since we started collecting is we've gotten a couple of architect bills that has come out. So that's what we're holding right now in reserve. It's making about 5% interest, so we've got it in some CDs. So we've got it working for us, or working for you to help us out. Challenges we're facing with funding since '21 to '24, we've seen an increase of 25% to 40% increase in product and materials, and I think Ray outlined that in some of his slides. We do want to have a discussion about extending the dedicated sales tax. Ray and I met with the city mayor and city council the last week in August, and it was quite a lively discussion and debate because there was discussion, do we just scale down the size of the property? Do we use different materials? And then they turned to me, and Commissioner Taylor says, Jim, what do you think? And I says, well, this is a lot to take in. And I says, well, this is a lot to take in. I'll come back with a couple of recommendations. And one of them was to have a community conversation. And since that conversation, I've also had private one-on-one conversations with individual commissioners. And there's serious discussion about just extending that half a cent. You've got it now, it'll run out in 2031. It goes for 10 years, but we may put it back on the ballot in January or February. Yes, sir.
What are you projecting this sales tax for the fire department bringing in at the end of that time?
It's about eight and a half million dollars.
So you're about $5 million short.
Yeah, yeah. It'll bring it, and that's very conservative. Nita and I are fiscal conservatives. We projected only 2% growth, which can change, you know, dramatically. But we're estimating about eight and a half million over the life of that 10 years.
So you paid a couple of the architectural deals out of that already, and it's still going to be $600,000?
No, that's the total contract right now, yeah. That's the total contract right now. The current dedicated sales tax runs through June 30th of 2031. When it was proposed, it was during the life of the tax. The proceeds realized from that additional one-half cent sales tax should be used for fire station, street improvements, capital improvements as approved by the city commission. The challenge, since I've been here, as I've been discussing with the elected officials, the fire station is a top priority, and I love them guys. They'll do about 1,000 runs this year, medical calls. We have four ambulances, and we serve the entire county of Kingfisher. But the challenge is, we've got other needs, we've got, we've got some serious, we had another water line break today. If you were up by the Chisholm Museum, you probably saw water flowing in the street. But we got it taken care of in a couple of hours. But we've got some other capital needs that need to be addressed.
My question is, we passed this three years ago. What's taking so long to get started? And if we go to extend this, how long are we looking to wait? Or are you going to hit the actual six months and get rolling?
Yeah. If we extend it, it'll be for another 10 years. So it'll go from, it'll go to 2041. Even though you passed it in July, we didn't start collecting sales tax for a couple of months. But I shared with you what we've collected thus far. The state is getting out of the sales tax business for groceries. You'll notice on your bill, there's four and a half percent off your grocery bill. So that gives us a little bit more flexibility to try to recoup those dollars for the city. Oklahoma is the only state in the nation that does not allow municipal governments to have ad valorem property taxes. It's written right in the constitution. And so we have to operate with sales tax or user fees and those kinds of things to operate our general government operations.
Hey, Jim?
Yes, sir.
I've got a question.
Hold on real quick, let me, I want to follow up with Jared's question, if you don't mind. Because I think it's important. Because I think that's a good question. When we started the process, we didn't anticipate, coming out of COVID, that the costs were going to be increased as much, 40%, so what is it? So our projections of what this project was going to cost us was below the 8.5 million that we thought that the taxes were going to bring in over 10 years. We thought we were going to have some left over to actually do some of the street improvement and stuff like that. When we started getting into the numbers and started getting into things and seeing how things were really going to cost, we thought, oh goodness, this is going to be a lot more expensive than what we thought. I'm, I'm, I go by the book of, if you have a budget, you stay within that budget. Doesn't matter what you want, doesn't matter, if you have a budget, you stay within that budget. And our budget was 8.5 million dollars. And so whenever we started talking about all this, we were like, crap, this is like a 10 million, 12 million dollar deal. What are we going to do? That kind of put the brakes on things because we don't have the other projects and other things that we need to do in the city. We don't have an extra $4 million to pull out of the general fund and just throw it into this project and put aside all these other projects that we have that we need to do in the city. And so that's whenever you sit down and you start value engineering the process and say, okay, what can we do to cut down the costs and try to get this as close to or within that budget? If it doesn't fit within that budget of what these guys need and what we need to build for the next 50 years, then we've got to go a different route. We've either got to fit the project in the budget, which means the size decreases, the, some of the things that are inside the building are not exactly what everybody wants. And it may not be a 50-year building, it may be a 25-year building at that point. Or you go back to the citizens who are paying for it anyway, and it's their money, it's you guys' money, and you get their opinion and say, look, we don't, we are not going to have enough money within this budget that we originally thought we were going to have to build the facility that these guys need. It's up to you guys to tell us, do you want us to stay within that original budget? Or do you guys want to go ahead and add on to that budget and allow us to build the facility the way that, the way that these guys can?
Do you feel like if we pass the half cent to continue on to 2041, then we're going to have the means to go that route?
Yes.
You're way ahead, and you talk about the budget here, but it's going to grow as the time goes by.
Right, so if we can get the extension of the tax, it's not, it won't, that basically tells us that we're going to have this much money over the course of time, and therefore that's going to cover the cost of it. We think that we can build this thing for the 13.5 million dollars. If you, if we extend this out another 10 years, and this is just back to the napkin math, right? We're expecting eight and a half million from this first 10 years. If nothing else changes, which it will, you add another eight and a half million, that's $17 million throughout the 20 years of that tax. That will allow us to build this facility, and it will allow us to start doing some of the things that we wanted to do in the street improvements. Because you've got to remember, if we know that that's guaranteed tax money coming in, we actually can go out and feel comfortable, if we have to go out and borrow, borrow to get that money right now. We know that we have that money coming in to make the payments on that loan, right? So it puts us in a position where we can do a lot more things. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So I just, I want to let you guys know that it's a great question about why is it taking this long to get here? Since we passed this in 2021. And it's because, mainly because the, everything was much more expensive than we expected, and we were doing everything that we could to stay within that budget that you guys gave us for the taxes of the projected revenue from the taxes. And we finally came to the conclusion, we're not going to be able to give these guys what they need with that budget. So we're going to have to do something. Either the citizens tell us, nope, that's it, you got to stay in that budget. Or yes, we're willing to add on to that tax, extend that tax, and go ahead and build this the way that they need it. Sorry, Jim.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
The original cost estimate for the fire station in 2021.
We thought originally it was going to cost about 5.6 million.
Yep. They also had a fire station at 10,000 square feet. And when I got here, I sat down with Tony Stewart, who was the current chief then, and I said, what's the current size of your building now? And he went and measured it and got, come back, he says, Jim, it's 7,500 square feet. And I says, Tony, 2,500 square feet, that's not going to add nothing, you know? And so he and I toured the state, we looked at four fire stations over the next few months prior to awarding this contract to B R W, just to get a feel for what's been built in the last 10 years. And we saw some great stations, we saw some things we definitely do not want in Kingfisher. Isn't that right, Tony? And we brought those ideas back. You know, there was times when the city commissioners were looking at a 20,000 square foot building. And I did some analysis. I said, I looked at the city of Kingfisher, your growth for the last 120 years has been less than 1% per year. So I just said, you know, we've got to be reasonable about this. I mean, you definitely do need a station bigger than what you've got. But we've got to be, because that thing climbs every time you move it up 100, 200 square feet. And so to Tony's credit, to Chief Gibson's credit, and to the firemen, you know, they all came around the table and they said, hey, I think we could work with this at 16.5, you know? And then the commissioners bought into that. The challenge was, once we awarded it to an architect that built 360 stations, he says, Jim, he says, this is, you know, what you're wanting may be even more than what you thought. But he gave us a $500 square foot station, and that's why we're here today. Because here again, I don't think anybody anticipated when they went to the public and said, oh, we're going to have to borrow some money? You know, we're not going to be able to raise all this money to pay the contractor. Because once the contractor builds, I mean, he's going to ask us for progress payments as that thing's being built. So I think there was some shortsightedness when they looked at the whole financial costs. And that's why we listed what it all is, the land, the cost of money, you know, the architect's fees. We're going to have to have, I call them a clerk of the works, but we're going to have to have our own inspector to keep an eye on the contractor. The architect's going to help us out, but, and Chief Gibson and I will be on site, you know, what little bit I know of construction business, we'll keep an eye on the contractor. But we're still going to need somebody to represent us, you know, as this thing goes on.
What have you done about grant money? Have you looked into that?
I have. And I told this person, I wasn't going to point him out, but I'm going to point him out. When I started seeing this thing happening, I had breakfast with Mike Sanders, one of Kingfisher's boys that grew up here and, you know, was born and raised. And I said, Mike, I said, I'm thinking about hiring a lobbyist out of Washington DC to represent us, to try to get, you know, some money from Congress, get a direct federal appropriation. And he sat right across from me, we were having breakfast at the cafe, and he says, Jim, he says, why don't you do it? And he says, I'll help you, I've been to Washington DC, and we've got local congressmen, and you have a connection from your ties back in Claremore on the other side of the state. And he says, nobody's going to sell it better than you. So I said, all right, Mike, I'm going to need your help, brother. He says, I'm with you. And so we started in April. I got ahold of Congressman Lucas's office, and I said, I'm not going to tell you a pie in the sky number. I'm going to tell you what I think we really need in Kingfisher. And this is a public safety building. And I told him I needed two and a half million. And so I filled out the paperwork, we had to fill out all kinds of stuff. And then he gave me a short window, I had about three days, to get letters of support in the community. Well, we got 10 letters of support, various organizations, Chamber Commerce, you know, anybody I could, I could find to write a letter of recommendation. Well, it made the first cut. But as you know, in Washington, things are strange. And they're telling me, Jim, we're not going to know for sure. We can't even get a continuing education, you know, a continuing resolution to get the budget, you know, the fiscal year begins October 1. And I said, if you could tell me right after Christmas, right after the election, you know, whether we're going to get that two and a half million, I'd be happy. But if we get the two and a half million, it's dedicated to this fire station. That was on the application, and that's what we're pushing for. I've talked with Senator Langford, he's in favor, he's going to support this. The chairman of the appropriations committee is, why can't I think of his name, Mike?
Cole.
Tom Cole, yeah, good old, good, another Oklahoman. He's the chairman of the appropriations committee. Mike was in Washington DC a couple of weeks ago. I gave him a note, I said, hand carry this to the boys in Washington. And so between he and I, we've stayed on top of this thing, and Mike's a great asset. He's worked Washington DC under a previous president, so he understands the politics of Washington DC. And I think we have a lot in our, going in our favor between the appropriations chairman and Congressman Lucas's. His staff has been good to, we just keep reiterating how important it is to Kingfisher. So we are pursuing that. Yes, sir.
What is the annual budget for the fire department? In other words, the cost to operate the fire department, wages, all of that, what is?
It's about 2.2 million, 2.1 million.
How much money does the fire department? Because I know that ambulance can bring in some money, and you guys are running all the time.
Yeah, we are, and that's a good question. Here again, the council, you know, Chief Stewart, before he retired, he and I pushed through the first rate increase in our ambulance calls in the last 10 years. And so we're, every time I see that ambulance go, I go ka-ching, ka-ching. We'll get, you know, we were leaving money on the table, you know, when you're doing 1,000 runs. We're estimating we'll collect about a half a million dollars in ambulance fees.
Every year?
Every year.
That's good.
And then we also get about a million dollars, sometimes a little bit more, from the 522. Is that correct?
Do you have a, do you have a floating scale of whether they're in town, like Kingfisher citizens versus Tennessee or Lowell?
No, we don't. We, it's just one flat fee for the ambulance runs. We don't ask for a credit card when we show up. We just take care of them and provide.
You get that bill about a month later, or a couple of months later, and you die from looking at it.
Right.
I know.
I know, I know. And we got Medicare patients, I mean, when we roll up on the scene, the guys don't say, are you got full insurance? You got Blue Cross Blue Shield, or you Medicare? I mean, they just provide the service, they're just good guys. But they'll do about 1,000, 1,000 ambulance calls. You want to add anything to that, chief?
So we don't actually cover Hennessy, like you said earlier. Hennessy has their own ambulance, and Cashin has their own, but we cover the rest of the county.
I knew you guys covered a large territory.
Right.
Yeah.
And actually, there's, I believe, on the billing cycle, the citizens of Kingfisher get a cheaper rate than out of town.
Okay, all right. For years, we were collecting about 300,000. And we're, based on what we raised our rates, and we did a comparison with, you know, all the going up to Eden and Edmund and everybody else around. We're still not the highest, but we're not the lowest. We were definitely the lowest before. So we're estimating conservatively, again, another 200,000 in new revenue in this current fiscal year.
My question, the reason I was asking that is, if you're charging everybody the same price, if I don't pay more, you're going to have to go further.
Yeah, yeah. We do not do any more, is it hospital runs? We don't, we don't go into Oklahoma City, we do a.
We don't do non-emergency transport.
Yeah.
Emergency transfers we'll still take. And also we'll take a non-emergency if we have to mandate that.
Yeah. We have six guys on a shift, and so that's 18, we have three shifts, that's 18, and then the fire chief is 19.
What do you project your needs going forward, like manpower? You expect to have to grow more? We need to have room for that.
So when he said the city's only grown 1%, we don't go off the numbers for the population, we go off calling. And since I've been here, 20 years, we've went up two guys. I expect in the next 20 years, it'll go up two more guys. And that's why this station, we're doing for eight bedrooms. We only have six guys in eight bedrooms right now, but we're trying to plan for the future, and I already have the bedrooms up instead of building onto the station.
Chief, one thing, I think your growth might pick up a little bit on ambulance runs for the simple fact that my generation, there's a lot of people that are going into retirement. That's part of what's affecting the need of help in the country. Because the generation is retiring, and there are not as many people there to take the place of.
Yeah. I attended a conference a couple of weeks ago, and that was one of the topics. I attended an economic conference, and they're saying, for every three people retiring, every three people retiring, these baby boomers are retiring in huge numbers, there's only one person to replace those jobs. And America's in better shape than China. China has a one-baby policy. But people just are having smaller families, and it's affecting social security. I mean, it's a rippling effect throughout the whole economy. But for three people retiring, only one person is back in the workforce. Yes, sir.
A lot of y'all know I served 38 years of public service. Prior to working for the highway patrol, I was a paramedic. I did that for eight years, so I lived in a station, I know what it's like to live with other people. I can't vote for the sales tax, I don't live in the city. We do have a business here in town, but I think a half a penny, one half of a penny is not a hot to ask to get what our firefighters need and what we're going to need for 50 years.
Yeah.
What's nice about doing that on a sales tax too, is you think everybody that drives through this town and stops and bails them, they're helping.
And we have a lot of people shopping in Kingfisher that don't live here.
Yeah.
So they're helping pay for that person.
Yeah. Yeah. That Dollar Tree, every time I drive. That Dollar Tree, every time I drive by, I see more and more cars there, so it's just adding to our sales tax revenue, so we want that. Let me see what else I've got up here. Oh, that's estimated revenue, sales tax, eight and a half million, is based on an estimated 2% growth, I already shared that with you. And questions, so we've been doing questions. Anybody else, anybody else have any hot, burning question?
Inflation, you're about, well, think about a 3/4%.
Well, you could go, and you could, you could raise the percentage, or you could extend the time.
For the next, for the next 10 years.
You could maybe have to extend it out to 2041, you could maybe do it out to 2035, something like that. But it's all about, what's the money you need, and will that, will that give you the money that you need? But, I mean, again, you gotta remember that this tax is not just for the fire station, that was the main priority, as to ask the citizens for this, this tax, was to build the fire station. But the original thought was, we would build the fire station, but also have a couple of million dollars left over, so that we could use for street improvements and other capital expenses. Right now, every single penny is going to the fire station. That, you know, and that, and we're fine with that, as a commission, I think we're fine with that. And if, you know, if the citizens are telling us, "You guys want to extend the, not the adware, but the sales tax enough to give us the budget to make, to build this fire station that we think that they need," we're all for it. We just, we're not gonna spend money that we don't have.
So basically, what you're asking us to do is just extend it?
Yes.
I'll piggyback on that. The reason we're here tonight is because when we pass that, I'm a little bit more fiscally conservative, conservative than Jim. If you look at this, as we've gathered it today, we're gonna collect about 7.8 million. The original intent to what Kyle was alluding to, is that we were gonna build a fire station, a 10,000 square foot fire station for $5 million. Obviously, that has changed. We, as a commission, evolved to the point that said, "All right, the voters voted on the fire station, we're gonna build a fire station." And so, we're gonna increase that to whatever we're collecting and project for that best we can. And so, the reason we're here, you've approved that, but we can't build what they need, given the monies that we're gonna collect. And so, the best course of action for us, firefighters and what they provide to this community, it's an absolute necessity that we provide them what, what we can provide them, given the constraints that we have. But the constraints are currently physical, right? And so, like I said, we evolved to that point where we would forget, forget the infrastructure and the capital improvements, let's contribute everything we collect to the fire station. But we're at a point now, you know, no matter what, we're gonna have to borrow money, because right now, as you said, as you saw, we have 2.2 million dollars in the bank, and we still have till 2031 to collect it. That borrowing of money's gonna cost us two and a half million, period. And so, that, that's another thing that we have to consider. I mean, you're building an $8 million, $9 million fire station, whatever it is, and you're borrowing 7 million, over the course of that time, you pay that back, you're paying another two and a half million dollars, and that doesn't go into the, the structure itself. And that's ultimately what we have to decide, and how we wanna carry it forward. They needed it yesterday, 10 years ago, there's no question. It was built in 1974, the current one. And so, 75, is that right?
75.
Anyway, they needed it a long time ago, and they do a tremendous service here. I do wanna thank them for the chili, I didn't get a chance, but it looked like there's not much left there, so appreciate them doing that. But it is needed, and you voted on it, we're gonna deliver that. We just wanna know that, hey, are you interested in it, to provide the money for us to get it built quicker than what we could have?
Yes, sir.
You brought up some really good points about what we need, and I agree. Right now, what is the fire protection class in the city of King Fisher?
Class three.
Class three. Three? Okay. So, the one thing on fire protection size, the fire station, the firefighters, is water. If you guys, you need to think about this, is that you have got to provide water to keep our fire protection attached the way it is, in order to prove it, we've got a lot more to do in order to lower that fire protection class. So you gotta think about the dollars you're gonna invest, and then the amount that's gonna return to the community through savings on insurance. Insurance is gonna get nothing to hire, and we all know that, experiencing that. So, I'm asking you to think about, about maybe being fiscally conservative with the fire station now, so that we can make sure that we have the money that we're gonna need to maintain our water systems, and for the future. It's just as important as a fire station.
So, I'll, I'll comment on that, if anybody else wants to as well. Obviously, three weeks ago, we had a significant issue that we really didn't think we would get the water back up. We're in the process, right now, of requests for qualifications for engineers to do a water study, among other things. And that was part of this program, or this vote that you approved in 2021, to invest, in addition to the fire station, invest into our infrastructure, as well as street improvements. As you've heard tonight, given where we are today, in order to build this fire station, we cannot invest in that. So one of the reasons that we had our last public meeting was to address those concerns in regards to our water. So you saw, we had the very lowest rates around here, in regards to water rates. So we just increased those in July, some, to put us, we're not at the lowest, we're not in the mid-range, as far as other communities around here currently. But one of the comments that I saw made in regards to that, hey, that the commission and the administration of the city knew this was coming, that's why they increased the rates. We hadn't started collecting anything, we'd collected two months, but we're gonna invest in our water infrastructure, there's no question. There's two things that are important beyond the fire, the firefighter and fire station and our emergency services, water and power. And I think you've seen the investment that we've made in power, there's some things that are coming up in regards to our power supply that we have, that it's old, too. We've got a lot of things that we need to address, but water and power are as important as anything we've got here. So, to your point, you're exactly right. I can tell you that we have, we've just approved in the last few months, three months, bringing in some fire hydrants, replacing fire hydrants. We've got valves across the city that we can't exercise or shut off, we need to invest in that. We've got lines in the ground, we don't really know where they're at, or what kind of materials, so there's a lot of things that we need to address. And that's part of the problem that we've had as a commission, is where, where do you start taking those bite-sized pieces to address the needs that we have? Because for so long, we have deferred maintenance across the city, and I could get into a lot more details, won't do that, we'll be here till midnight, and I don't think you're gonna be here, but, that long. But we do have a lot of needs, and we're gonna address those as best we can, given the constraints we have physically.
So you did studies, or you're in the process of adding somebody to do studies?
So we're in the process of selecting an engineer that's qualified to do that. You know, we, we have an engineer on staff right now, and unfortunately, we worked with one engineer for quite some time, and they may get a portion of what we're doing now, but an engineering firm cannot be all things to all people. We have a lot of things that we do in the city of King Fisher. We have power, we have sanitary sewer, we have water, we have streets, I mean, we could go on and on and on with the things that we have to address, drainage. Not all engineering firms can provide every service that we need. So we're in the process of reviewing some proposals that they've provided, to select some engineers that will allow us to take care of the needs that you're providing.
You know, and I guess I wish I could tell you, I've been in this business over 31 years, I wish I could tell you that King Fisher is unique, you're not. Every city I've been in, they don't wanna spend money until it's absolutely broken. There's deferred maintenance in all the communities I've been in. And I'm glad to hear the mayor's evolving.
Fixed up.
I'm a moderate, you know, conservative, he is definitely a very conservative, moderate. But he's evolving. I have thoroughly enjoyed working with these elected officials. They are forward-thinking, they have supported, you know, ideas that I've brought forward. We try to think through them. When an item's on the agenda, the council knows that it's been vetted by me, and that I stand behind that recommendation. And as a city manager, I don't mind taking risks. I just wanna be able to look behind me and say, "There's five elected officials that believe in me, and, you know, we're going in the right direction." So, that's, that's our plan going forward. This has been a community conversation, and that's what we're just trying to do, is get a feel from you. I sent out 2,600 letters, and I appreciate those of you that have showed up, so. Anybody got any other questions? Any ideas?
I got a copy.
Yes, sir.
On cheapening up your products that you put inside this fair, inside your fire station?
Yeah.
I was involved in rebuilding this, this fairgrounds from the get-go. This building was built in 93, it uses commercial product in it. We've had very few problems with it, very little replacement, about the biggest factor we've ever done was putting paint on the walls, and we replaced the floor one time since 93. And I don't know how many years that adds up, but your commercial products are gonna pay for themselves in the long run, whenever you build this. And sometimes you gotta go ahead and invest in the future, and, you know, have a 50-year product. No flat ceilings, put a slope on, whatever you do. This, this building has a standing seam roof on it, we've never had a problem with it.
Yeah.
So, you know, and we put the commercial products in throughout the, these fairgrounds whenever we built them and stuff.
We wanna, we wanna build something that'll stand the test of time.
Yes, you need to.
Yeah, yeah. So, we're trying to think strategically. Chief, you wanna add anything to what I've said, other than an amen?
So do y'all wanna relook at the drawings, and actually have me explain to you what we're putting in the building? Because we're not asking for a lot. Anybody wanna look at it?
Please.
Okay.
And while Ashton pulls it up, we have plenty of chili. Go get another bowl.
Yeah, some of you young kids, go get some more chili.
The firemen don't wanna eat that all by themselves.
Right.
And also, Jim said, "We have 19 firefighters, we actually have 20, we have one volunteer, Colby Kramer."
Oh, all right. All right. And then, we can always call on Chief Stewart to come out of retirement to haul the hose, or run the ambulance, or...
Yep. You can haul the hose. So, the committee that put this together is retired fire chief Tony Stewart, city manager Jim, Brittany, and myself, with BRW.
I'm not the smartest cookie in the middle of the room, and certainly for cities, but why do we not have a penny sales tax?
Okay, so, right here, you see the entrance, which is on the north side of the building? You're struggling.
Why does it go towards streets? Why is that not?
So you'll enter the lobby.
There's a lot of cities do.
Yeah, they tried to do, in perpetuity, and they voted it down.
Because we have to train so much, and we have 20 guys on, and for me to send 20 guys to OSU to train, it'd take me three years. Whereas if I have my own training room, OSU will come to me, train me in one day.
How much, that saves a lot of money.
Yes, yeah, because I don't have to pay as much overtime, lodging, travel. So, then you walk out of the lobby, there's a public bathroom. Go, actually, enter into the station, so if the city or anyone else wants to use this training station, training room, it's open to the public, and it will not bother the firemen. Because this door will be locked most of the time. You got the fire chief's office, and if you turn and go south, it's just electrical storage room, conference room for when I have my officers' meetings, which I have three lieutenants and three captains of myself, and we have meetings once a month. Then we also have meetings at the chamber, as far as department head meetings, we could use this room if we needed to, if the chamber's booked up. So if you keep going south, it's a report office, and those are computers where my guys can do their fire reports or EMS reports. As well as have the window to see out in the bay, and outside on the front apron. You'll see stairs, I know a lot of people ask, "Do we have a pole?" This circle here is a pole. And it enters from this side into the bay. So we have done an elevator according to ADA. You got the battery storage, two decon bathrooms, so during COVID, my guys had to strip down to their underwear in the bay, and go, walk through the station to the showers, to shower after every call. Whereas with these, I don't have to introduce that stuff into my station, to my clean zone, my cold zone. So that'd be a warm zone. Gear storage, and someone asked about grants? I think he's gone. I've already got grants for those gear storage lockers. So those are paid for. And then, this is just more storage stuff. EMS storage, as you know, we run a bunch of EMS calls, and we have to keep supplies for EMS calls. SEVA, that'd be a compressor room, where we fill our own SEVAs, the pack we wear on our back to go on structure repairs. And then it also has tools to fix SEVAs. Then a shop's just, it's a tool room. Backing up, we've got a lieutenant's office, and a captain's office, and then, an exercise room, which we don't have right now. Actually, my guys put one together at the county barn with their own money. But it'd be nice for them to be at our station exercising, because we have to be healthy and fit. Unless you're a chief. And so, the fire rising room you see there, that is the fire sprinkler stuff. The apparatus bay, we built it to fit three vehicles in a row, in each bay. So it's long enough, and I believe, do you remember the footage between the...
Is it 100 foot?
It's 100 foot, maybe. By 80? Is it 80 by 100?
70.
76 by 100?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go upstairs.
So that's 7,600 square feet. That's the same...
All of that is the size of our station.
That's correct, that's correct.
Every one of my trucks and trailers will fit that bay right now.
And then here again, we also built it, that if the town grows, and we need an extra bay, we can add it on the end.
What do you have?
The conference room also doubles as a safe room.
Yes, the conference room, since we're in tornado alley, we have to have a safe room. So the conference room is a safe room. And for the city of King Fisher, our fire station is the emergency operations center. Okay. All right, we're upstairs. So you come up the stairs, there's a pole right there, inside the stairs, in, in the living quarters. Just a utility room, bathroom, 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 so there's four bathrooms. So we basically doubled our bathrooms just upstairs. You'll notice all these are dorms. There's eight dorms there, which, when you think of a dorm, it's not, it's a bed and a nightstand, is all that's in that room. There are no desks.
And a foot locker, you got a foot locker for them?
Lockers on the outside.
Oh, yeah, okay.
The lockers are right here for our guys and their uniforms. So, and you ask, "Why are we doing eight?" Well, we plan on eventually having more people, because we're gonna have more calls. No one's getting younger. So, but for now, the... So, but for now, the two extra rooms would not be furnished, they'd just be storage rooms until needed. You have an IT room, mechanical, which is HVAC and all that stuff, a day room, with, it would have six refiners right now, but it's showing eight, a dining room and a kitchen and three pantries. Each one of those pantries will have an icebox and cabinetry in it for our guys to store their food. If you go up to the fire station right now, you can't fit anything in our icebox because the guys bring their food to work, and that's what they eat, and then they leave it there.
Somebody else eats it.
Or someone else eats it.
That's right.
Every Friday, it's mandatory to clean it all up.
Yeah.
Every Friday, we empty the state, empty the refrigerator, unless you call and tell us to save it. So going outside, this is still on the upper deck, there's a patio, which will have a grill there, and a place we can cook outside and sit outside. This is on the east side, and stairs down, because we have to have two sets of stairs. So to save money, we put the stairs on the exterior, one set, because it's cheaper and it don't eat up square footage of the building. Any questions on any of that that I went over? You got anything on that, Greg?
It looks like an invasion of design.
There's not much left.
No, there's not, not much left.
So what, one more thing, what Jim was talking about, go to the layout of the land, the layout of the property, right there. So, initially when we started, we wanted five bays. Well, budget cuts, we, so we cut one old bay off, but we left enough room, if we ever could build it, we'd be allowed to.
And here's Chief Stewart, former. Just, uh, I'd like to, uh, piggyback off the gentleman that's on the end of the table that he may be gone. See, he's still here, he's hard to hear. He was talking about ISO, ISO rating for insurance.
Oh, yeah.
When I first came on 40 years ago, we were a nine. And then, uh, when we finally got to getting involved with ISO, there's, there's actually a plan that you have to follow, and, uh, if you can follow that and, and, and complete as many as, much of that as you can, then you will lower your rating. So we went from a nine to a seven, I couldn't tell you what year it was, but, uh, about, about 15 years ago, we went from a seven to a five under, uh, Chief Point Exeter. And then during my tenure, we went from a five to a three. And, uh, we were, and they show you what your score is, and we were this close to a two. So with this new station, and when they get the, uh, training in the back, so the training is a vital part of the ISO rating. And so when we drop from a three to a two, for those of you that are not talking to your insurance agents, let them know that you're, that we're a three, whether you're in city limits or outside city limits, that affects your premiums. And I try and tell that at as much public meetings as I can because I don't know who's getting advantage, business and residential, it applies to everybody. So, when these guys get this all done and they ask to get another, uh, inspection or another, uh, ISO, uh, test, rating, which at the end of the test, I would almost bet you we're gonna fall to a two, which is dang good for our town. And that's, we've worked hard through the years, when I was a firefighter up until my, uh, retirement, we've worked hard on those, uh, details to get as much of that accomplished as possible. Now, 25% of that is water, 25% is communications, and the rest of it is us, which is our equipment, our training, our manpower, uh, and, and part of that communication falls on us too, as well as the dispatch. So 75% of that, we work hard to keep that at where we are, or better, to eventually get to a lower rating so that you guys can benefit off of what we do. And that's what we're here for, is to help you in all directions that we possibly can.
Well, I know personally, you know, on taxes and stuff, I don't mind paying that tax, if I can see, feel like I'm getting what my dollars is going for, you know, getting my dollars worth out.
Can I say something here in regards to that? So just to clarify, I mean, we're gonna go back out to the vote of the people because that's what we're required to do to extend that. So be aware of that, and I don't know exactly when we can do that, but it'll be after the first of the year. Um, so, just if you would, spread that word that we are gonna go back out to the vote to be able to extend that, and we would appreciate, uh, your consideration regarding this, given the situation we're in.
And if we can't, if we don't get that passed, then... If the citizens tell us that they don't want to extend that for another 10 years, then that will tell us the budget that we have for, to build this building, which will be that 8.5 billion. It doesn't matter, if we want a 16,000 square foot building, if we can't afford it, we don't build it. That's, that's the way I look at it. So, I mean, it's either to get what we, to build the building that we think, and we know that these guys need and want for the next 50 years, we need the guys' support to go out and educate those that didn't have a chance to come here, and understand why we're doing it, because everybody else looks like, hey, why didn't, you know, just build it, we've already voted, just build it. Well, it's a little bit more complicated than that, and that's what we've explained to you guys tonight. So if we don't get that passed, then we have an 8.5 million dollar budget, and to build these guys a building, that's gonna look very different than what we have now.
Thing is, is I'm gonna go back on what Tommy said about the ISO ratings, that saves us money.
Yeah.
And if we don't get a good fire station, they're not gonna give it to us, and our rate, our insurance is gonna go up instead of go down.
Right.
And there would be leftover for any truck.
That's right.
You're not building this building just for the firemen. You're building this building for the city of Kingfisher and for every one of you that needs these services. So, don't miss.
Yeah, as, as we said earlier, we, we're the only full-service fire department in the entire county, and so we help some of the volunteer fire departments, there's a grass fire outside the city limits we're rolling, the ambulance rolls throughout the Kingfisher County, so you're right, ma'am.
One last thing, Jim. On this list that was up here, the best scheme and the better scheme, which kinda delineates, you know, from, uh, commercial to, uh, residential commercial, the top one, the exhaust loopers, when we first started this, my concern to the council was that let's protect the firefighters from all this, uh, cancer-causing carcinogens that we deal with every day. And that was my number one thing. And if we go with the base scheme, then we're not gonna get that. So we're gonna be exposed to things that needlessly to be exposed. And the other one is no generator. If electric goes out at an emergency station, now you have no way to operate your building. That's common sense.
You lose communication.
Absolutely lose everything. And just to drop down, cause I don't wanna get into a lot of this, no alerting system, when we get a call, we get alerted at the station, tone goes off, everybody knows what's going in, how, so if we don't get that, they're gonna have calls on the phone and say, hey, and if we're not at the station, cause we're on another call, how's that work? The alerting system now, since we're 911, they have radios wherever they go, and they get alerted through that. But if they're, if we don't have that, they're gonna have to find somebody that's got a cell phone and call us if we're out on a call, hey, we got a fire downtown or whatever. So there's so many things on there. If we stick with the base scheme, the department's gonna need some major work done shortly thereafter. And why would you say, well, we're gonna give you some more money another five years down the road, when you just gave us money to build this? So I think, it sounds like to me, you guys are coming same length, same wavelength as the rest of us, and looking at the better scheme. I hope you are.
On behalf of Mayor Culvault, the commissioners and the administration, I wanna say thank you to all of you, and by the power vested in me, I've now made you all ambassadors. Go out into the community, talk in your churches, talk in your neighborhoods, tell them what you've seen. Tell them to come up to City Hall, we'll, we'll have these drawings at City Hall or at the fire station, if people wanna talk with the chief. Um, we're trying to plan for the future, and I really appreciate you guys coming, you've been here for an hour and a half. Um, thanks for coming out. Appreciate you. [applause]